Good to go. All right, let's call this. Please rise for the flag. The 2.0 agenda approval.
I moved that we accept the agenda stated.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to 3.0 visitors to address the board. This is a time for comment on non-agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action, but will refer concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report to the board. We appreciate you keeping comments to three minutes per individual or five minutes if you're representing a group of patrons. This portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes. Please note personnel concerns will not be discussed in a public meeting. If you do have any concerns with school district personnel, please submit them in writing to the superintendent. All right. We have three comments here, so we will begin in the order that I've received them. Abigail Wilson. Topic is concerns for students.
We'll grab another shirt, so we'll get you one ready.
Hello. My name is Abigail Wilson and I'm here today to address my concerns regarding the new school district policy. After reading the newly proposed policy, I feel that there are several aspects that will not only implement future harm to students, but also absolves responsibility from the teachers and administrators responsible for the safety and protection of St. Helens High School students. With past allegations and outrage from students and parents alike, I find that stating that sexual conduct does not include touching or other physical contact that is necessitated by the nature of the school employees' job duties or by the services required to be provided by the contractor, agent, or volunteer and for which there is no sexual intent, leaves room for much personal interpretation by the employees following this policy. It is not the district's place to determine what students and parents can and cannot consent to or what defines touching as inherently sexual. Furthermore, it is not the district's job to redefine the meaning of consent or sexual conduct. By including this statement in your policy, you are opening the door for employees to abuse power and have physical contact with students, all while being protected under the district. Secondly, this policy further shows our community that the best interest of the district is not the safety of the students, but protecting employees. When the district takes the side of those who abuse their power over the children they are sworn to protect, it is clear that safety is no longer important to them. If students do not feel safe in their learning environment and parents don't feel safe sending their children to school, then there is zero trust in the district or its employees. It is an absolute obligation for those who work with children to prioritize the children under their care at any cost, and the school board continues to show us that they will not handle these issues and allegations accordingly. The continuous avoidance of these issues and deflecting behavior by the school board only further proves that concerns of their authority brought up by this community. I bring attention to these issues not only for the sake of past, current, and future students, but also based on my own experiences with the school board. I have been personally and repeatedly written off by the district when addressing serious concerns about administrators and employees. I will no longer remain silent. What will it take for you to take these claims seriously? I implore the SHHS school board members to go home this evening and consider this. When students came to you as the adults that were supposed to protect them and confide them in you about claims of abuse and neglect, can you honestly and truly look at them, look at us, and say, I did everything I could to protect you? I would say that my appearance here today proves we did not. Enough is enough.
Thank you. So thank you for that comment on the policy. I separated the piles wrong, and that should have been in the second part of this, but we'll take that as the comment that was given here. I'll switch to the non-agenda items, and then we can go to the actual agenda items when we get to that section. Okay, for items that are either marked non-agenda or have no markings, we'll go with this. Maddie. Is it Fowler? Fowler do? I'm sorry, what's that? It's an okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Zach Dorn. Topic transparency. Non-agenda, okay, so adventuring. Topic boards resignation.
Vote from article by National School Boards Association. School Board Members: Why We Serve. Article talks about desire to serve students and their communities, to give students a voice, to support students, to ensure all students are treated with respect and dignity, to help make decisions that are in best interest of community, to understand importance of mandatory reporting and keeping kids safe. How you have failed us as board members. When you failed to report abuse, you took away students' voices. You failed to support them. You took away their right to thrive in the world after they graduate. You failed to show them respect. You have not given them their dignity. You failed to make decisions in students' best interest, community's best interest. One benefit of being on the board is you're labeled an esteemed pillar in the community. A pillar in community refers to someone who is highly respected, an important individual who plays a crucial role in their local area, often contributing significantly to its well-being and stability. How you have failed us as esteemed pillars. You are rapidly losing respect of this community every day you don't resign. You have disrespected parents in this community by acting like our outrage is the problem, like we are inappropriate for demanding transparency and answers. We, the parents, have every right to demand your resignation. We have every right to be outraged. These are our children, not yours. You are standing in way of the community's right to take the first step to making our kids safe again. Google search states mandatory reporting helps protect children by ensuring suspected cases of abuse or neglect are reported to authorities, allowing for intervention and preventing further harm. Key reasons for mandatory reporting. Early intervention. Accountability. Access to support services. Community protection. Legal liability. Early intervention. By requiring designated professionals to report suspected abuse, issues can be identified and addressed quickly, potentially preventing further harm to the victim. Accountability. This holds perpetrators accountable for their actions by bringing cases attention of relevant authorities. Access to support services. When you report suspected abuse, it can trigger provision of necessary services, counseling, medical care, and legal assistance to victims. Community protection. By identifying potential risks within community, mandatory reporting can help prevent future cases of abuse. Legal obligation. Many professions have legal requirement to report suspected abuse with potential consequences for failing to do so. How you have failed us as mandatory reporters. You have failed to protect our vulnerable children. You failed to report abuse to authorities. You failed to allow for intervention. You failed to prevent further harm. You failed to provide necessary support services to victims and their families. You failed to hold perpetrators accountable for their actions by not bringing cases to attention of relevant authorities. You failed to trigger provisions of necessary services such as counseling, medical care, and legal assistance to victims. You failed to identify potential risks within a community. You failed to prevent future cases of abuse. You failed your legal requirement to report suspected abuse and have received no consequences. Facts. Fact. DHS says zero reports of abuse have come in from districts since 2018. Fact. J. Doe's family sues district for failing to protect their daughter. Judge states district knew of abuse and did nothing. Fact. District was informed Stern was under investigation for sexual assault of multiple victims. Fact. Student came forward at September board meeting stating she was being groomed by Sterns. Fact. No reports were made. Fact. Sterns arrested two months later. Fact. Student returns to November board meeting, confronts board for doing nothing regarding her in-person report of abuse. Fact. None of this needed to happen, and you would have been, and it would have been preventable had you done your job as mandatory reporters and helped this community keep its kids safe. Instead, we are up to 17 victims, and that's on you. This board should have resigned or been recalled last March after district was sued for millions and negligence to keep a child safe from her known predator. It has been proven that this board had firsthand and secondhand knowledge of abuse over the years. Proving that you didn't report is not up for debate. It's been proven. By not resigning, you are leaving this district vulnerable to additional lawsuits of neglect, causing this district additional millions. The board conducting business as usual is an insult to victims. You owe the victims your resignation. The parents of this community have no faith in this board to keep our kids safe. Parent outrage has attacked your ego fragility, keeping you from doing what you know is right, resigning immediately. Stop making this about you. It's not about you. It's about this community. It's about our children, not yours. If you don't resign, we could always recall you, forcing you out of these seats of privilege, a privilege you don't deserve. I believe in long run, in the long run, a recall will help district from being sued for additional millions. This board has utterly failed us. This whole speech has been reasons to resign. Stop fighting this community. Please. Let us start anew. Let us rebuild. Be on the right side of things. Do the right thing. Resign now.
Next, we have Sarah Young, city of Scapus's residents, and topic is financial concerns, ethical concerns.
Um. In light of the last two comments, I'm going to adjust what I have to talk about a little bit. I believe that it still falls under ethical concerns. When I was 14, I was raped by an adult that I met through my high school. And then my son this year was groomed and victimized by a new hire teacher with a criminal record who was allowed to teach in the school. I can tell you what it is like to go through life after something like that happens to you. It is beyond difficult. It is swimming upstream. No matter how good your life is going. It follows you. It affects every decision that you make and has a part of every outcome in your life. And I can also tell you that what sticks with you and what lingers isn't as much what happened, what the actual event, what the person who did that to you did, but what impacts your life more is the people who sat by and did nothing while it happened and stayed silent. Shame on you. Shame on you. The financials that I would like to talk to you about tonight, a lot of them I touched on at the last meeting, even though I was muted during part of it, but what I will say is that this district set aside $98,000 to deal with legal fees this year. That's not going to cover it. You're making decisions that are also negatively impacting this community financially. Please resign so that we can get people in who do not require such high fees, such high liability insurance because of your previous actions in relation to Jessica Doe. The next district over pays $20,000 a year in legal fees. That's what they've set aside this year. This is the saddest thing that I have witnessed, but also the most empowering thing that I have ever witnessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is Shan Leet. Thank you for the pronunciation help there. Safety of the students.
Hello. I have been a resident since 2016. I graduated here when it was Columbia County Education Campus back in 2019, and I love this school. I adored the teachers that I had. I looked up to everyone here. And as Sarah Young also said, I was also a victim of sexual assault, not in this district, but I was also 14. And that leaves an emotional scar on you for the rest of your life. I have two cousins who were molested by their father, my uncle. The trauma that these students and the safety is a huge concern to me. I have a son who has special needs, and he's only two. He is non-verbal and he's autistic. If he ever came home and I saw the signs that someone touched him, I would be just as mad as the rest of these parents. I cannot fathom nor comprehend the rage, the pain, the anger that these students and the family, the whole community feels. I will not say to resign or to step down, but if you guys truly, truly want change, it is to actually help us understand what is going on behind the scenes and make us understand what is going on instead of having this mob behind you. I am proud of this community and the light that has been brought up by the parents supporting the kids and all these victims and Jessica Doe. Had it not been for her, none of this would have happened. No one would be speaking out. No one would be doing anything about it. When I was a student, I couldn't talk about Wobleski with my classmates at lunch in class at all. We were told not to talk about things like it never happened, and it felt very hush, hush. And for students who had Wobleski that looked up to him, who weren't told to talk about things, they didn't know what to do. They didn't know how to feel about this because someone that they looked up to is now being charged with a very heinous crime. Now we have two more teachers who are being charged with abusing students, and it is a previous trend that teachers are not always who we can trust. And I know that if you guys truly want to help us, make us understand what you are trying to do to help us and help us be the change for the future generation for the kids who can't speak up for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. That means all of the non-agenda comments. We'll move to 4.0 consent agenda. The board on an individual basis prior to the meeting has reviewed all material. All financial reports are available for review by the public and the business office. Board considers consent agenda items routine business and will be enacted by the board in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items at the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent agenda. It's been moved to approve.
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All right, 5.0 new business. 5.1 property donation acknowledgement, Mr. Davis.
Finally, some good. A local family that has watched our kids in the CTE program wanted to help them along in the renovation remodel program, the heavy equipment program, and also the natural resources and some of the others. And so they have donated a rather valuable piece of property right across from the high school. So you can continue the good work that those kids are doing. And I'm just going to read the thank you letter that we have for them. This is for Steve and Julie Mood, DBACM and CNM Investments LLC. Dear Steve and Julie, on behalf of the St. Helens School District, I want to thank you for your generous donation of the following property. Those portions of Trax 9 and 10 Greenwood Acres located in the city of St. Helens, Columbia County and state of Oregon, further identified as Columbia County Tax Lot 13066. And I'll just aside, I mean, I worked with them for several months on this and the property has been recorded. This is the acre of land right across the driveway from Avamir's entry. So if you walked out of building B, you'd just walk right over there, and there's an acre there that is residential R7 property. We recognize your desire for this property used in St. Helens High School CTE programs, including the renovation and remodel class and in partnership with the construction heavy equipment class. St. Helens School District prioritizes honoring your donors' preference for use of the donated property, but in accordance with IRS guidelines for tax deductible contribution. Gifts are received with the understanding St. Helens School District has full discretion and control over the use of donated property to fill its exempt purposes and programs. St. Helens School District can make no commitment for development of the above property beyond transfer of title. At this time, no goods or services were provided in exchange for the above charitable contribution. The district's tax ID number is 936011087. Depending on your tax situation, you may be able to deduct this. As, and thank you again for taking an interest in the education of St. Helens School District students. So these folks have been very kind and generous to us and in support of our program, and they're very excited for the hands-on learning opportunities that we provide. And as it turns out, I volunteer and work with that class because that's kind of what I do, but the the opportunity here is great for kids to do hands-on learning and, and the money that goes, that they make in that program then funds the program. So it's a, it's a program that has bought their own equipment and they do their own work and, and then that's a perpetual thing that funds itself rather than having to take out tax dollars. That's what we do. And we want to thank Steve and Julie for their kindness and donating that to us.
Thank you. Any, any comments?
No, thank you, though.
Yeah, no. Very simple.
The R and R program is one of our strongest self-sustaining programs, and it's nice to have the community members give back and volunteer more opportunities for kids to learn hands-on skills. Very nice. All right, 5.2 election of 2025 board chair. ORS 332.005 to 332.040. So Policy BCB is where we will be looking at our board officers. Typically, this is done on the first scheduled meeting after July 1. The board will select one of its members to serve as chair and one to serve as vice chair. No member of the board may serve as a chair for more than two years in succession. The board member is unable to continue to serve as an officer. A replacement will be elected and will serve the remainder of the officer's term until the following July. The duties that are required are to assist the superintendent in establishing the agenda for regular board meetings. Call special meetings when required. Preside at all meetings of the board and enforce the rules of order. Sign the minutes and other official documents that require the signature of the chair. Represent the district and the board at official functions unless the duty is delegated by the chair of the board to another board member and have the right to discuss issues and may vote on any issue. In the absence incapacitation or death of the chair, the vice chair will perform the duties of chairman so acting will have the chair's powers. Vice chair will perform other functions as designated by the board. So that is where we're at today. Given our resignation of a former member that put the vice chair into that second paragraph that I read there. So we actually need to actually get a true chair on board. So we will actually take the action item when we get to 7.1 and 7.2, but we'll open up for discussion.
I can tell you right now, I don't know enough about the scope of how those particular those particular positions end up working to know how to be able to be more effective in being able to coordinate, especially with a brand new superintendent. So I would cut myself out of the running for now. Like, if I, if I, once I get more familiar with PLPs and how to be able to establish better communication channels, I might be in a better position, certainly not right now.
Fair enough.
Can I rebut you?
Sure.
So one of the things as a community is ask for a new leadership. And I think that you would be adequate in filling that. We all were a chairman at one time ourselves. None of us had been chairman before. I will tell you that two weeks after I was put on the board, several years ago, I was moved into office. But really, the function of the chairman, there's no specific powers delegated to the chairman of the board other than you sign some things for signature and you run the meeting according to Robert's rules. You lead the flag salute. You do exactly as you've seen Trinity model, and the advantage of this is that should we not be here and you be reelected, at least there would be some experienced leadership on the board for you to help guide the next group of folks. So in my way of thinking is very different from yours. If I can preach Sunday sermon, Jeremiah said, I'm not qualified. God said, yeah, well, I'm a boss here. So and Moses said, I can't do this. And God said, well, I made your mouth, you can too. And so I really think that you could handle this. And I, I've watched you for the last couple of days and to me, I would appreciate it if you would rescind your no and maybe make a yes. While there are folks here that have experience that can, if you have questions or you're negotiating for a contract, I would suggest that you work with the vice chair as well so that there would be two board members and you not try to handle that on your own. I think Mr. Webb would be happy to coach you in the next few weeks as well. He's already done some of that. And so there are folks around that would encourage you. But I think that you're capable as any person in this room is capable. And so I just want to say that from the other side. I don't want to is okay. I can't is an excuse, not a reason, and we don't use that. You can, and you'll stand corrected like the rest of us if you need it.
So it's more like a foreman of a petted jury then. Okay, that I've done before and.
it's, and you know how that happened? I ended up in a six-person jury and what ended up happening is it was a long, long, long long trial. So my first thought was to go to the bathroom as soon as we ended up hitting the jury. And as soon as I came out, the other five were like, we elected you as foreman.
It is, it is very much like that. It is very much like that. You're not shy. You're willing to speak in front and and quite frankly, learning, learning that level of leadership is one of the things, an advantage of being on a board is that you can work on conducting a meeting. You can even learn, look up YouTube on on what one tap, two taps and three taps of the gavel mean if you want, but here we just kind of go anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Then I guess I will rescind that.
Thank you.
Keep it up the compelling arguments.
And you might know who my nomination is in a minute, but fair enough. I I anyway, I I really, I I don't want you to say I don't feel adequate because I really feel you are and there is really a a genuine public interest in maybe a new chairman.
Well, and I also feel that if, you know, you worried about learning all the new stuff too, and also with the new superintendent that it is great at the same time to be the vice chair because you're working closely with the chairman. I'm sorry, and learning stuff from them in between now and even election time and the end of a time period of July one that gives you six whole months to learn how to do all that stuff too that way. So.
That is true.
Yeah. So don't be afraid.
All right. If you're still, if you still don't want to, you can say, no, I don't want to. I'm not, I don't want to pressure you that way, but I want to take some misconceptions out that there are people that think, oh, boy, I'm going to run this thing. I'm king. And and actually in the planning commission, we have it even better. The chairman doesn't get to vote unless there's a tie. I I liked that rule because there was a lot of controversial things like garbage burners that I didn't have to vote on. Anyway, there you go.
Can we?
Yes.
No, I don't have any. I agree. Most of the time the chair sits in the position where like Trent, when we were doing the acting superintendent role before, most of us would conversate with just him. You have to be careful of telephone meetings, basically. So you're not going to relay what so-and-so said. You keep all that information to yourself. Most of the time when I'm doing emails, I will CC my chair and just so that they're aware of what I'm doing. And so you you'll feel like you have a little bit more correspondence happening, but it that that is the intent. So you're in the the know of what is going on and what kind of people are thinking and feeling so that you can juggle that role when you give an opinion. And you were, you're, it is just your opinion as one, but you can relay that to the superintendent. And then when you, you know, your only action is when you're here making an actual formal vote.
Good, I can do it.
Thank you.
And I'll provide one slight caveat. So there there goes a lot of organization and trying to navigate things and we're about to switch through some very significant things with the board. So our wonderful board secretary is leaving us and I want to say thank you so much for all of your guidance and support.
Thank you so much.
And we'll have a new superintendent. So it may be a little bit more of a bigger lift than it was in a normal course of business. Given the circumstances and some of the challenges and some of the other things, they're all right. I mean, you absolutely can do it, but it will be a heavy, heavy component when you're still trying to learn what the rules of order are, how we're organizing things, what the structure are. And we'll go into it a little bit later about some options on that. But to a certain extent, it may be, you know, running before you're ready to walk. So I'm not saying that you can't do it. I'm saying that there are additional challenges coming down the pipeline.
Yeah. I went into this fully understanding that there was going to be a lot running as soon as you hit the ground, but it's not. You don't go into this without dedicating a considerable portion of your life to it. I understand that more now than ever. You guys have been putting in a lot of effort in order to try to end up making things, just just trying to be able to get organized and how to be able to end up picking through the really difficult rules on how that works. I did read through those. And it there is there is, there are benefits and detriments to transparency. But this is definitely a time where we need more of the transparency than than the other.
This guy elected, this is like the America's Got Talent. There are five thousand votes here. Be careful.
Okay, so we've talked about the election of the board chair. If necessary, the board vice chair would need to be reelected. That is five point three. Do we have anything else on five point two or five point three? Okay. Moving on to five point four, next acting superintendent qualifications and characteristics discussion. So at the last meeting that we had, we invited public comments and gained quite a bit of information relative to the qualifications. We received commenting also via email afterwards. And then any other information that was gleaned throughout the course of the week was included here. So I'll read through what the next acting superintendent qualifications and criteria are. I believe it's on the screen behind me. So the St. Helens School District is looking for an educational leader to serve as the next acting superintendent who prioritizes student safety and well-being, has demonstrated success in creating supportive and inclusive schools, keeps students at the center of their decision-making and elevates student voice, possesses a solid understanding of classroom instruction, learning improvement science and youth, has experience with operational fiscal and academic systems, exhibits an inspiring forward-thinking presence, seeks input from students, staff, families and community, fosters a culture in which all constituents see themselves as a team of learners and problem solvers with agency and accountability for student learning, has experience with policy development, implementation and accountability systems, has developed and sustained partnerships in the service of children, families or schools, is comfortable with executing plans developed by others and has an action orientation. Who exemplifies the following? Accountability to public trust and accepts responsibility to hold others accountable, honesty and transparency, courage and integrity at all uphold what's right despite challenges, consistent, clear and direct communication with all constituents, the ability to communicate effectively and empathetically across various settings and audiences and is an active listener, cultural awareness and a growth mindset regarding race, class, ethnicity, multilingualism and ability, commitment to collaborating with educators, staff, families and community, approachability and relationship building skills, visibility in community schools and classrooms, and possesses successful experience as an educator and administrator, preferably as a superintendent or central office administrator, a current Oregon administrative license or qualifies for an Oregon reciprocal administrative license and a clean background check. So that was what everything was distilled into one page that will be used to screen the next acting superintendent. Any questions or comments or thoughts?
No, I ended up talking pretty extensively with Superintendent Webb. Like he ended up making some corrections for some of the things that I was concerned about. And that now the the fact that that it has prioritized student safety and well-being at the very top of the list, that's very important to me and I'm glad that that's there. So I'm actually very happy with this particular draft, like you report.
Any other comments? So the community was incredibly concerned about what was going to be used to select the next acting superintendent. And I'm hopeful that the list that has been provided here takes into account all of the comments that were provided to us and provides a well-rounded expectation for the next person that will step in to perform the acting superintendent role. Okay, we will move to five point.
Could we actually ask to reiterate the process of funding the next acting superintendent?
You want the next steps?
Yes, is that okay?
Yeah. So the next steps for this is now that this has been completed and once we've approved this, then Hank Harris from Human Capital Enterprises, who is again doing this work pro bono, so we really appreciate that, will take this information and whoever has put in for the position will be screened using this as the rubric. So those that have put their information down, this will be what is used to determine who may be moving forward for that. And then next week, once assuming one or two candidates meet those criterion, we would go into an executive session and interview those candidates. And if after the interviews are completed, it appears that there is a person that meets all of these criterion in a functional and reasonable way, then we would go into an open session and vote on whether to move into negotiations with that particular candidate to take on that role. Is that an accurate summarization?
That's correct. And the target start date for the next acting superintendent would be the following Monday, which would be February third.
Yes.
And just for the record and for attendees here, I've indicated to the board and I've indicated to the district leadership team that I'm, I stand ready to support as a, as a, as a colleague, as a thought partner, the next acting superintendent, either by phone call or via virtual meetings through Zoom. I'm happy to provide that kind of support. I want to make sure that that handoff is seamlessly executed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does it suffice?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Moving to five point five, twenty twenty five, twenty six IGA intergovernmental agreement, St. Helens School District and City of St. Helens School Resource Officer IGA discussion. Dr. Webb.
Yes, as the board is aware, the district and the St. Helens Police Department previously had in place an SRO program in district schools. That partnership came to an end several years ago. Given conversations with Acting Chief of Police Hoag and feedback from district constituents and identified in the district's preliminary corrective action plan regarding recent events, I'm recommending that we reestablish the SRO program partnership with the city of St. Helens and St. Helens Police Department beginning in August twenty twenty five. The annual cost of the contract is a hundred and seventy thousand for one officer placed at St. Helens High School. The terms of that partnership are outlined in the IGA in your packet. That start date will provide time for the district to prioritize this investment in school safety as part of the district's spring budget development process for this next school year. I'm going to invite Acting Chief of Police Hoag here to the microphone. He's been given a heads up. He might be invited to address the board, talk a little bit about the partnership in the past, a little bit about the partnership in the future and respond to any questions that the board may have. Chief, welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah. Do you have any background relative to the history of the partnership and some of the conversations around partnership moving forward?
Yeah, well, this really goes back to mid to late nineties. And this is back when there was a DARE program. If anybody out there remembers DARE, if you're a part of, yeah, we had some DARE graduates. It started out as DARE and that kind of you know, went into having a school resource officer, and I don't remember the exact year, but I want to say ninety six or ninety seven. And it was around for a long time and we had several different school resource officers in that program, all of whom did, you know, of course, a different job, but a but a good job and COVID really killed that for us. And so when COVID hit, of course, we couldn't have SROs just sitting at the school by themselves. And so they went back to patrol. One, we actually added a detective and with the benefit of that, we just did not want to give that up. And we found some success with that. And so, you know, there was of course an appetite to bring the SRO back and we just couldn't find a way to do it with the staffing that we had. So and then recently, we've talked about I think you and I had met a few times and and talked about this and what that would look like and I you know, made it pretty clear that it would need to be an additional member to the force and and not take from existing staff.
Thank you, chief. Board have any questions for Chief Hoag?
I actually do. Is the, is this particular officer going to end up being considered a mandatory reporter?
Yes, all police are. Yeah.
And I have a question. I know that you guys have been short-staffed, just like schools have had to work hard after COVID to get staff back into. Do you do you believe that by August that you'll be able to get your hands on another officer willing to come and work?
Yeah, that's, that's the hope, right? And and that's why there's also the delay. You know, why not just put the officer in right now? It's to give us some time to hire and and see where things are. But yeah, well, we will, if this goes through, we will, you know, have someone in there.
Okay, thanks.
Well, training and onboarding and everything else and get getting a vehicle. There's many, many things to bringing in an officer. If you decide it now, you have time between now and August. If you decide it in July, you don't. Let's just plain, you don't, you have to make a decision and a budget season coming, we have to also put that spot in the budget. We can't just make a random decision in the fall and not face the consequence of that. So.
Yeah, my intent is it to hire someone to be the SRO. It's to take from existing staff. So it's a fully trained officer and and maybe even with that experience previously. So we'll backfill that position on patrol or wherever it comes from and, you know, through the normal hiring process, which is of course tedious, but we'll make it happen.
Do you have an estimate on how long your hiring process typically takes?
Well, it just depends on, you know, market. Yeah, that's how you're doing with the number of applicants. Actually, I'm developing something that we're, I'll need a partnership with the the school district on. And I've talked to Dr. Webb about that a number of times and use, you know, utilizing the school for like an all-day assessment center for hiring officers as opposed to a quick twenty-minute interview and and we're making the best call that we can. This is going to have you know, really an all-day with several panels and school's kind of the place to be able to do that. But you know, that's going to take some community involvement, maybe from a little bit from the school district and other areas of the community. Really, you're talking about it's the training, it's the field training that that takes the most amount of time and the academy and all of that. So we're not changing that. We don't want to change that, right? We want all the training to be difficult and have it to be meaningful. So it really takes from higher to for an entry-level person, really eighteen to twenty-four months before that person's fully ready to go and and on a shift and on patrol by themselves.
So in this case, then would you be looking at an experienced officer for this job and then do backfill?
Yes, exactly. The the person selected for this position, we're not looking at a brand-new officer. This is somebody that's, you know, spoken in front of a group before and and maybe has already been involved in some projects and the job description, by the way, is going to change a little bit from what we've had traditionally. Or like I keep telling people, not your father's SRO position. It's going to be a different component where I think before we were trying to measure the impact or the meaning of having an SRO by, you know, statistics involving number of reports and all that. And I think time has shown us, maybe that's not the best way to measure it. So this person's going to have to be a little bit of a teacher, a little bit of a mentor and just to have that relationship with with the kids. Yeah, there's an enforcement component to that, of course, but we want this to be someone that can wear several different hats and maybe be a part of the evening activities, you know, within reason and it's a whole new process.
Yeah, I did want to uplift a couple of the duties that are outlined in here to your point about presenting programs on various topics to students, which would include basic understanding of the law, role of law enforcement, drug awareness, anger management and mission of law enforcement. I think that'll be helpful to have some of those conversations and personal discussions. Assist the principals in developing plans and strategies to prevent and or minimize dangerous situations that may occur on campus. So I think having a presence on and being proactive about the discussions is going to be very beneficial. Encourage interacting with students on an individual basis, familiar with agencies and resources that offer assistance to youth and their families. So I like how it's Uh, familiar with agencies and resources that offer assistance to youth and their families. So I like how it's, uh, reengages the humanity of what that work does and connects people to the purpose of the role.
Yeah, and of course, there's the summer months, right? What's gonna happen during then? Of course, the SRO would go back to, um, doing patrol, which isn't a bad thing. You don't want those, those are perishable skills. So you don't wanna completely lose those. But at the same time, there's nothing saying that there could not be a summer program or a class that's taught during the summer and that relationship can go all year round.
We're very excited to hear this coming back. So we left it on the budget up until last year, uh, to try and get it back. And, um, I'm glad that we're back in a place where we can reengage our local law enforcement partners and have a presence on, uh, not just the high school, but also to be able to go and do some other work. Um, I think it's important that, uh, we get it to other buildings and provide opportunities for, um, educational places. That way, everybody gets to understand and see and, uh, begin to reflect on what the role is.
Yeah, we have some new schools, obviously, and some new officers too. So the, uh, SRO can be, you know, that link to, you know, so the officers are all familiar with the layout, you know, floor plans of all of the, uh, of the schools as well, so.
Just wanna take a moment to acknowledge the leadership of Acting Chief Hoag and the spirit of partnership and collaboration. It's been a real treat to work with Joe on, uh, having, uh, the right kind of conversations that will add an additional layer of safety in our schools. So thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So since this is another thing that's been a part of the high school of the last couple of years, how does this like affect students? Like, is this somebody that they can go to? Or like, what's their relationship?
Yeah, you know, that's something, that's a great question. And we don't expect that to happen on day one. Um, I would think on day one, hey, there's a cop here. But through time and through establishing rapport, um, I think that that can be, you know, someone for the students to go to. And traditionally with the SROs, we have had that. And our, our SROs will tell you that they, you know, have all kinds of people coming up to them with all kinds of questions and information. And the other thing too is they get contacted after hours by staff and parents sometimes as well. So that's why this is a, a position that I, I really wanna distinguish between, you know, the traditional patrol officer, which we need, right? But this is a little bit different. This is about, you know, relationships and, and, um, being able to communicate effectively to not only the staff, but the students and the faculty as well, um, and the parents. And so it takes kind of a special person to be able to do that. So, uh, we'll we'll make a, the right decision on putting the right people, uh, or the right person in there. But yes, you're, you're right. This is somebody that the, the kids need to be able to go to.
So this is going to be more about, um, more about crisis prevention than enforcement?
Well, yeah, and I think as years have gone on, I think when you go back to the nineties, it was, you know, the school resource officer, it was, you know, MIP cigarette tickets and uh, chasing kids around Safeway and, and all of that. And I think in time, we've, we've realized, maybe there's a little bit of that that should occur, but, um, we're looking at this too as, uh, what could we do? We in law enforcement to recruit as well. And so some of these, as you know, talking thirty years of SRO programs across the state and across the nation, um, it's gone from just security to, okay, how about some programs? Well, how about recruiting, you know, the right people for law enforcement for the future too? So we're going in there with a, a lot of things that we would like to accomplish. Um, but yeah, the relationships, no matter what, are, have to be part of that.
There's two kinds of right along. Some in the backseat, some in the front seat. So, you know, there, there's possibility we could have, uh, a first responders class and the, the, and SRA could be a part of that along with fire people and, and rescue folks. There's, there's many things that we can do in our school. But it always takes a, a, a leadership, one contact point, no matter who. And so that's another option that floats out in front that uh, as he's talking about careers and career technical education, there's, there's more to this than just meets the immediate imagination of now they're putting cops back in my school. That, that's, that's a whole crazy notion. Uh, what, what we're looking for is a that a resource person that can help accomplish the goals and tasks of change and safety that we're looking for. So I, I, I think part of it's gonna be, and you're getting your help in choosing the right person. Uh, that's a, that's a big deal.
I think that's part of my comment, so I didn't want to put, uh, Chief Hoag into the hot seat, but, um, and you don't have to answer my questions. Um, but some of the questions that I was gonna pose and just in general, cuz I had met with Acting Chief Hoag on November eighth. And when we had talked then, uh, we had gone over the fact that when the Jessica Doe incident had happened, we had an SRO in the school. So it, it doesn't actually prevent anything, but it, it can, it can be a resource or an individual that can help. And during that investigation time, uh, teachers and staff and students chose not to go to that individual resource officer when they were reporting. So, um, I, I just wanna make it clear that I fully support law enforcement in our schools and I always actually have. And I, I'm one that will fully like, here, interview my child. Like, I am fully cooperative and my heart goes out to law enforcement. I know that they, uh, handle a lot every day. And, um, but I, I on one hand, you're gonna look that, look at it like a fix-all. On the other hand, it's really not. There's a lot of things that are gonna be required. There's uh, the way an officer handles a fight and a way a teacher handles a fight is different. The way they, when they find drugs or nicotine, it's gonna be different than maybe your teacher. So there's other things to consider when you have law enforcement in the, uh, school. Um, what does it mean to be detained? What is it? What is, uh, what does consent look like? So there's teaching of your students when you have a law enforcement individual in the school. And there will be parents and staff that do not like having law enforcement in the school. And, and that's always been something that has to be weighed. Um, I, I, on the other hand, think it is a use of funds. So just making sure that is, it is a good use of funds. Maybe we want to be teaching students consent or how to be assertive and um, just how to communicate what we want and what is appropriate. And also, I would like to have a answer from our students in general, whether or not that's what they want. So maybe we could hold the students and, and just find like, kind of what they're doing and what they think. But, but.
Ma'am, please do not disrupt the meeting. Adventuring, if you cannot keep yourself. Please stop or you will be asked to leave. Thank you.
I think maybe one of the things too, if we could all work together is to figure out, maybe it's a whole new way of being that person and being, um, coming up with ways that we can teach the kids so that they, even staff, um, that they can feel that they can come to that person and, and even tell them what you need as an officer to be able to have the right information for you to do anything to help them, no matter what the situation is. So um, might be something for everybody to learn from, just like you gotta learn to be a mandatory reporter. What do you need to know to, when you make that phone call? So it's the same thing for, maybe we can be working on teaching the whole community on things, so.
Something that would have been confusing to me would, if there was a resource officer there and I was gonna report, I would I've just gone to the resource officer and that doesn't qualify as reporting. And that was, is, we need to clarify those kinds of misunderstandings that just because you told your principal, I, I as a former teacher, I would have told my principal and, and called it good. Uh, if the resource officer there, I might have done that.
You could clarify how many years ago that was, though.
Yeah, this is a long time ago. I mean, but, but the point is that we need to clarify those kinds of misunderstandings and, and make sure that even though we have a resource officer there, if you report to them, that's fine, but that's not meeting the true level of mandatory reporting. And, and, and that's that puts the onus on them. Maybe it does, but I, I, I'm, again, I, I kinda express my own confusion.
Just to be clear, every employee that works for St. Helen's School District is a mandatory reporter.
Yes.
Every board director is a mandatory reporter.
Correct. But reporting, I worried you report was my thing is you can't just go to the resource.
Regardless of who you report that to, if I have personal knowledge, I have an obligation to report that to DHS and to law enforcement. That's and that's what we're learning. So.
Thank you for sitting down, folks. So.
We kinda bird walked into another conversation here. What's in front of us
Yes.
really is considering the recommendation from the acting superintendent relative to the recommendation of moving forward with this IGA that's before you. Um, and unless you have additional questions for, uh, Chief Hoag, um, I, I think we should let him get on with the rest of his evening.
I did have one more question. So we have had a number of, um, former officers that are former SROs that are still employed. And so as this is built, as we go through this process, um, will you be putting together something to kind of bring in some of their experiences to be able to put forward that new generation of SRO that you're talking about? Some of their experiences on what did work, what didn't work, their concerns? Uh, will that be a part of this program?
Yeah, you bet. Um, actually, we have, uh, a former SRO that was just promoted to sergeant. And so I, I'd like to hear his, his ideas. You know, we have the benefit of having a long period of, of having SROs, but that doesn't mean that we, of course, wanna repeat the stuff that we didn't like. So I see it as a, where to hit the reset button and build off of what we know, build off of what worked. But I, like I said, this is gonna be different. The job description is gonna change a little bit. The expectations are gonna change, um, as our hiring has changed. You know, we have, um, even our newer officers, they've we've changed the, the onboarding to where they've have to give speeches. Well, it's to prepare for these kind of things. So they can, uh, talk in front of a group and maybe be an SRO down the road where they can, you know, teach a class to students, uh, be a resource for staff. So yes, it's, it's gonna be a little different.
And I don't know if you do bid shifts or anything. Will this be abided or will this be appointed?
This will be appointed. There'll be a process for this, uh, you know, cuz it has to be, um, again, the right person. Um, you can have a really, really aggressive um, patrol cop. That's a, a tremendous asset to the community and the department. They might not be the right person for this particular position. So um, we'll just have to find the right person and, and, um, a good process to find it.
Okay, thank you for that.
And do you have support by, uh, uh, from the city council in funding this position and maintaining it after the two-year contract or even with the two-year contract?
We haven't gotten that far yet. Uh, what we have is really, I think, the, you know,
I have an agreement.
The ball's, ball's kind of in your court for this process to be approved. We'll go back to the city and, and discuss that second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if we move forward this, do you believe, as of things stand right now, that you will be able to, uh, provide us that officer at the beginning of the, uh, onset of this or, um?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Nice one. I, it's a clarifying question, but I wanna make sure that, you know, not only everybody in this room, but people that are watching our movie later is still, to my beliefs, especially having had to be that reporter multiple times in different capacities.
We're talking about the IGA right now.
I know. I wanna know from him is if I saw something and I needed to make that report, when you referred to it to being both DHS and the police, uh, the belief I would say that most people still had though is that you really is that, unless it's happening and it's bad right now, you call nine-one-one. But otherwise, you call the one-eight-hundred type hotline number for DHS. For you, especially with a smaller amount of officers in our community, would you want people to be making phone calls to all parts or just to be making that phone call that goes to DHS?
You can notify DHS or law enforcement. We cross-report.
Yeah, so, or, but not necessarily all parts. Would that be right? Okay. That's why I just wanna make sure everybody's realizing you don't have to make a phone call to every single part.
No, which makes it easier, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move to five point six, policy updates, first reading, five point six point one, GBNA A slash J H F F. Uh, suspected sexual conduct with student and reporting requirements. GCAA standard for competent and ethical performance of Oregon educators and GHFF, GBNA A suspected sexual conduct with students and reporting requirements. Uh, so oftentimes, we would have previously the, uh, superintendent provide an overview of what these are for.
I'm, I'm prepared to do so. Uh, this is first reading, uh, no action is required tonight. Uh, thank you, Acting Chair Monahan for, uh, introducing uh, those revised policy and new policy, uh, GCAA. These proposed policy revisions or new policy have been recommended by OSBA's legal counsel policy team to districts throughout the state. House Bill forty-one sixty enacted in twenty twenty-four changed the definition of student. Changing a student who left school or graduated from high school, and I quote, within ninety days, end quote, to, and I quote, within one calendar year, end quote. And is in effect as of July first, twenty twenty-four. The district received these proposed revisions and new policy in December of twenty twenty-four. So the proposed revisions comport with this recently enacted law and are before you tonight for first reading.
Thank you. Comments?
Can I add something there? Just in a process, there's multiple readings of a potential rule. And the first one is just to say, hey, here's the draft. And now in a few minutes, we're gonna have you the opportunity to publicly comment on that specific draft, as well as other things you've heard in the meeting tonight, because they were all on the agenda. And then we take those comments. And if you especially have something constructive to modify the wording in a particular draft, like you say, hey, that, that line really doesn't say what I want it to say, then please give us a suggestion so that we can, that will help you and, and we'll eventually vote on a final draft and, and we can have a second reading and, and sometimes a third reading. Uh, and final reading and the final reading and then makes it a rule. So, um, there'll be a couple of meetings where we do this. There'll be a work session between here and there. But this is why we have the comment after this, so that you can see, okay, this is what we're gonna consider. Now you can make your comments, but constructive ones that that line offends me are, or I really like that line. Please don't lose it. Those are both solid things that can help us in making, uh, a, a policy that is agreeable to everyone. So we, we have to use legal as well. And, and, but this isn't gonna be a time for public comment on these things and, and that will be constructive.
Any other comments?
Maybe just only that, and also that policies actually come from OSBA. So anytime something's recommended, it's at a state level. Boards take them and review them. And really, there's some things that you cannot change. There's some where you have an opinion. And there's other things where you can kind of just decide if you want it to be a, a pronoun or not a pronoun kind of thing. Um, just simple. So most of things in most states are, most districts in the state are actually very similar.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't make these up and they're but we can certainly modify them within the rules. Some things need very specific and clear definitions so they can be enforced. And so that's why sometime it, it, it may seem odd, but anyway, that, that's why we have, we can get legal confirmation of our opinions, so.
Well, yes, but the, um, the one lady before did end up bringing up a pretty good point, in my opinion, where there are aspects of working, how it's defined can seem vague, like not, not necessarily like there, where there's an upper bound and a lower bound. Whereas like the lower bound, this is what you can definitely report to law enforcement and an upper bound where it's like And an upper bound where it's like, this is absolutely required in order to be able to do, do the job. And then there's this very large gray area between that can end up causing a lot of disconcerting.
That's, that's why we have this opportunity now for folks to put their input in and, and, uh, we can reflect that back to legal and they'll help us with that.
And, and some of those policies are directed towards staff and some of them are directed towards, uh, students. So most of them work together. Uh, just clarifying certain words here and there.
And in general, uh, so in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, um, we went through and did an entire like overview of every single policy in the district. Uh, it was with the support of the OSBA who brought in somebody. There were like four work sessions and we went through every policy and, um, confirmed that they were either up to date or if they were relevant to our circumstances or whatever the case was. Um, and then now as we go through as boards, uh, policies are recommended, they're more on a, um, as they come out type thing. Previously, we had a two reading timeframe in which it would be presented at a meeting and then it would be, um, voted upon at the next meeting. We changed that several years ago to three readings. And so that provides opportunity for the community to be notified. And then it provides them opportunity to either write down their comments for the day, or if they wish to come back on the second reading and provide additional conversations or discussions about what their concerns are, or if other people want to come and do that. So provided an additional opportunity. And then at the third reading, that would be when the finalized verbiage would be in place. Um, and then we would put it forward, uh, noticed appropriately. And then any further comments? And then after that point would be, so there's multiple points in this process for all of the policies that are reviewed to be able to go through discussions and, um, feedback and alterations.
Thank you.
And then some of the policies refer to certain descriptions or things that are, um, verifiable while through like legal language. So some of the things that we may want to change or not, that's why we put it through a legal discussion to ensure that if we want to change something and say, this is what we want, that it would, um, withstand legal scrutiny outside of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, in addition to all of these copies of the different, uh, policies, can, um, we get not for us, not just for us, but posted on our website, the actual copy of the House Bill four one six up. You got all parts of it?
We should like him.
And am I correct or wrong? On that house bill, that would only apply to Oregon at this point, correct? That's not a federal, that's the state, right?
It is a state level, uh, legislation, correct?
Okay. Any further comments on the policy updates? All right, we'll move to six point O. Visitors to address the board. This is time for public comment on agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action, but will refer concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report to the board. We appreciate you keeping comments to three minutes per individual or five minutes. If you were representing a group of patrons, this portion of the meeting will not exceed thirty minutes. Please note personnel concerns will not be discussed in a public meeting. If you have concerns with school district personnel, please submit them in writing to the superintendent. So I've already aired in, uh, speeding one question here. So we already took your comment related to the policies and that will be reflected in the other components, just so that you're aware of that. Okay, uh, I have Stephanie Kroll, supporting police.
I didn't really plan to speak, but when you guys started talking about, um, bringing police back in the school, can't tell you how passion I am about that because I actually went to school with Mr. Hoag. And, um, so when I was a kid, I could have very easily fallen on, down the wrong path. And I don't, I'm, I'm sure older community members might know Officer Richie, but I will still say to this day that he saved my life by seeing me being affiliated with certain people. Him pulling me into his car, taking me for a ride, talking things out, telling me, is this really the choices you're wanting to make? And I'm all, so you're going to take me back to my friends? No, we're, I'm, I'm taking you to your mom's work, you know? I mean, he took me to my mom's work because he wanted me to really think about it before I went back and really made a certain decision. Cops are the good guys. Okay. I trust them. Okay. And I really think that they need to be there. I would trust going to a policeman over these four any day of the week. I'm not going to trust you guys because I don't feel that you guys are guilty of anything. Okay. You guys just showed up to the scene. Okay. These ones over here, it's a whole different thing, but I think that it's very important that the kids need somebody that inspires them, lets them know that the cops aren't the bad guys, that you can go to them, that they're going to protect us. You know, they're going to protect the kids. They know right from wrong. Which I know you guys do. I'll just look at you four. Um, okay. So that's what's important to me is knowing right from wrong and doing something about it. And I would trust the fact that if a kid were to reach out to a police officer versus one of these ones, it's going to go further. It's going to make more weight. They're going to do their job. They're going to do their job because they swore an oath. And it was an honor to swear that oath. Whether they swore an oath or not, they haven't honored it. Okay. So I, I, I can't even look at them, but I will look at you guys because this is so important. This is the future of our children. We need our kids to know that our kids are safe, that they need to know that they can reach out to people. People are going to listen and they're going to care and actually make a difference in their lives and inspire them. I mean, you see videos on TikTok and all the time of these cops that take time out of their day to go and play some ball with the kids on the street. It's like, yeah, that's, that, that's the spirit. That's the spirit we need back in the mentality of all communities, not just ours, but just the spirit. I think along the way through the years, we've lost the spirit, what it is to be a human being. Okay. And not overlooking things or ignoring people and, and, and not reporting like you were supposed to do and you didn't. We need somebody in there that needs to care enough to do their job. And not just do their job, but do it because they care about their community. And a cop doesn't sign up for a community unless he cares. So that's what we need. And I, for experience, I will tell you that those back in the days, back in the nineties, those cops saved my life by carrying, my mom knew everyone by name. She delivered the Oregonian to the police station every single night. I got a couple out after curfews. My mom would drop it off. Uh, newspaper off at the newspaper. They're all, I got one for you. And they would hand me over to them. I'll be the first to admit it. So they literally make all the difference. So I'd rather pay for them at the school any day than pay their wages any day of the week.
That's close. Okay, next will be, uh, adventuring on mandatory reporting.
This is for you, Matthew. I am highly concerned about something you just said. You were talking about reporting and you were trying to understand the ins and outs. And you mentioned a large gray area. That's dangerous. There's absolutely no gray area. You tell everything you know. If you're going to withhold information because you're worried about damaging someone's reputation, are you trying to protect the teacher? I was confused about why you think there's a gray area.
Uh, yeah, if I may.
So we're listening to comments. We don't actually respond. We just take the comments.
Well, it would be really important if he did, because there's no gray area.
I wasn't talking about the nature of reporting. What I was talking about was.
Mr. Douglas. This portion of the is for them to talk to us.
Let him say what he's going to say. I just.
Those conversations.
Because you're brand new and it means everything.
No, no, and that makes sense. Uh, so I'll try to be quick so that you can continue to have your time here. The, I was talking about the nature of what is different between what is necessary for teachers to be able to use as like touch or whatnot in order to be able to do their job and what is considered reporting to the, have to end up reporting to the officer because this is obviously sexual contact and it's not avoidable, but there's a lot of gray area in between. For, well, what is this touching considered sexual? Is pushing somebody out of the way if they happen to be going down the hallway considered sexual? Like there, there, there's a wide gulf in between what is absolutely reportable to the police, not to us, but to the police and what is considered absolutely necessary for their job. And that's what I wanted clarification.
Thank you so much. You're brand new, so it was really important to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one more. Sarah Young, making the state's suggestions fit our community's needs. Miss Young, you're here to address us too, if you would like to address Mr. Hoag, and that's another opportunity.
Um, I believe that it would be advantageous to have him if he's right here weigh in on what a gray area is. I believe that if a student is reporting something, there is no gray area. They felt victimized and then it is up to DHS and law enforcement then to sort out, um, that issue. It's not up to anyone else. Um, the, what I read from the state, and I understand that, um, the state has put out what changes that they would like to see happen. And then on the local school board level, if I'm correct, nod that like you can adjust that to fit your own community's needs. And, um, that was the language that I saw of like, you know, changing little bits here and there. It does not say in it that, um, it must, that the person must report to the police and to DHS. It says that they have to report to the administration. I reported to the administration. I reported to Nicole Hilton, who is still there. And she did not call the police about my son's case and she did not.
We don't talk about individual things. If there are personnel concerns, please take it to, um.
Understood. Um, members of the administration that are still in the school knew that things were happening and did not report. Um, I believe that the language has to be changed in it to say that every administrator, every teacher has to report to DHS and the police, not just to a higher up. Um, you mentioned that everything needs to run through legal. Legal is not there to protect students. Legal is there to protect the administration from lawsuits and from having to pay out and to defend. So I hope that if legal gives you pushback on this, that you will push back against it because it is what the community wants. Um, sorry, I am looking through notes just really quick to make sure that I have said everything. Yeah. Again, everyone should report because I think that a lot of people are using the excuse that they assumed someone else reported it. Like, and that's not good enough. It's where this failed. And if we are adjusting language to fit our community, don't allow it to be more opaque. Like, please, please adjust it to honor what the victims at Saint Helen's High School in the Saint Helen's School District have had to endure. Because things were made not clear by lawyers to protect the people in charge and not the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ashley Christner, GCAA mandatory reporting.
Hi. Uh, this is actually just kind of five point six altogether. First of all, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and thank Dr. Webb for being the first one to my knowledge, who has said it out loud to the community that every single employee has a responsibility to report. Um, and to piggyback on what Sarah has said, um, it's super important that the employee, while the, the protocol or the policy and the district calls for them to report to the administrator, that they are very clear that they have a legal obligation and responsibility to report directly to either of those two entities as well. So that's, I'll keep it there. Um, because I know there are plenty of people more important than me that need to speak tonight, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Russell, uh, there is no topic here, but I'm assuming it's agenda.
Hello. Thank you, um, for hearing us tonight. I just have suggestions and then concerns. So, um, I really like the idea of officers being back in our school, but I also had the same concerns of some of these victims from this case that you are, were in this crisis from, also had officers in the school as well as Roblesky. And I feel like Chief Hoag touched on this and, um, that, but there's an importance between, if I, when I've asked, once hearing that officers could be back in schools and I've asked students, their response was, are they there to back up teachers or are they there to back up students? And while I don't believe there should be one or the other, there does need to be some type of understanding that they are there for everyone. And that there is trauma-informed care, crisis intervention, understanding how to deal with children with disabilities and autism, suicide prevention. These are all areas that an officer needs to be very, very well trained in. And then also just their own bias. And that just, it just really needs to be checked. Um, but I actually really appreciate that this will happen. I would like to suggest that anytime a student is questioned by an officer, that their parent is contacted and in there with them before they are asked any questions by an officer. So I, that is just my comment on, um, on that. Except also, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to that for a hot second. I think we can blur lines of who are our friends as staff and who the officer is there to, to support. And when there's officers that see tape around a desk or a, a door off of the hinges, to ask the right questions and to get those right answers so that they have the whole story, because there was definitely things that were in place that should have triggered some questions for officers if they were there at that time. I also think it would be imperative for officers to be in with students when they are reporting things to staff. For instance, I know when, uh, students did report about Sterns and to Roblesky, ad men threatened that they were slander. They threatened their graduation. Um, and they were told to not talk about it again, or they would face punishment. So for me, having an officer in with any of those hard, difficult conversations, I think is important. And I would hope that whatever officer is in there has the strength to stand up and say, hey, uh, you are not handling this the right way. You, this is not how we treat someone reporting. We don't threaten them with. uh, you are not handling this the right way. You, this is not how we treat someone reporting. We don't threaten them with slander. Since Dr. Webb will be leaving us soon, um, I know that you guys had brought up the guidelines for new hire. I would like to know if the background check is state or national. I think there's a big difference. Um, I, I would like it to be national. I think a lot has been missed recently and people are in our schools with failed background checks and they are already in our schools. Oftentimes, background checks are just one state and I would like to, to ask that you do not stop there and that you continue to do a national background check. I wondered if Ken Partial is being looked into for superintendent. At one point in time, Ken Partial's name was brought up. Okay. My point is, I would like to know if he is going to be a shoe-in for that or what he is doing. Um, I think that's actually everything. I think everyone else will touch everything that, that needs to be discussed about verbiage, but I did just want to let you guys kind of hear what we're feeling about that.
Thank you.
And then wait, when you guys respond, do you guys actually respond to us in an email with the questions that we've had?
We can end up having, if you want to end up sending us via email, we can, we always end this one. I at least respond.
Okay. My understanding was that if we came with question.
Or this, yes, this is the only response I'll give, is that as I read the information, as you provide information, once all of that's done, then we have a conversation with the superintendent to ask for any follow-up that we were going to do. So at the end of this, I'll ask for the follow-up that I'm going to ask for.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
So I am probably going to mispronounce this and I apologize in advance. Uh, Maddie Filardo. Okay, uh, concerns for students.
My name is Maddie Filardo and I'm in my junior year of high school. During my freshman year, I attended St. Helen's High. I'm here tonight to share my concerns with every parent, student and staff so they can understand what is possible under these policies. On form G B N double A slash J H. I'm sorry?
Oh, acronym again.
G. G B N A A slash J H F F.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, sections four and five language is concerning, quote, student conduct may only be sexual conduct if the student is also an employee, contractor, agent, or volunteer. This reads as student to student sexual misconduct and has no reference or requirements listed and is not even mentioned. In other words, the verbiage protects staff from any student safety concerns, which again is not in line with mandatory reporting laws. Let me give you an example of what this can look like. During my freshman year, I was sexually assaulted by another girl. She sent pictures to my Instagram account, account, one of which my mom always checked, eliciting sex and or sexual favors. These images were shown to me in class at school of multiple naked fourteen-year-old girls touching each other's breasts. I instructed her to stop sending me these as I was very uninterested and I informed her that I was straight. My mom emailed the principal in October of two thousand twenty-two, dealt with all the admin at the school. At no point in time did they contact their parents or the student about the sexual misconduct and the assaults that were occurring. This then turned into a case of bullying and harassment. I would attempt to use the restroom when I'd hear my name being called and nail scratching on the door of the stall I was in. This was no joking matter, for they truly had the goal of taunting me and making me fearful, and it worked. I shared with my, I shared with my mom and she contacted the superintendent Scott Stockwell as well as the school board. Our messages went unanswered for a number.
I realize you're sharing a, a personal story here typically.
It relates to the issue.
I know, but.
I'm almost done. I'm, I'm almost done. It relates to the.
You go through, just.
Quite, quite frankly, though, I would have reported had I known the name of the person when a young lady was talking a couple of months ago. I did not know who she was talking about at the moment. And I think that maybe I'd just like to hear what she has to say today.
So I, I am encouraging you just as you go through, just keep that in mind, that names and things, just your experience and the ex, the circumstances, just names out.
I only mentioned Scott Stockwell. He's not a, a minor, so I can legally say his name.
We don't talk about personnel, so it's, it's the personnel.
Okay.
But you can say superintendent.
Superintendent and.
Well, it's not Dr. Webb, so.
I'm just providing the guidance on how you can finish your story.
I'm sorry?
I was just providing the guidance for how you can finish your story, so please do.
Okay. Thank you. Our messages went unanswered for a number of months. All were ignored. Each and every one of you have stood before this community on numerous occasions stating you've never received proper complaints from parents. This is a lie. When will you admit to lying to the community of St. Helen's concerning receiving proper complaints? I digress. My point is, safety concerns of and for the students should always be the number one priority of all adults in your district, including yourselves. On section five, the definition of sexual conduct occurs before, on, or after June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one for purposes of reports that are made, investigations that are initiated. This, once again, is concerning. Please explain why June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, as it looks to simply be a policy for protection for the teachers instead of a policy for the protection of students. Then on the sexual conduct forms eight point one and eight point two, that is necess- necessitated by the nature of the district's employees' job duties or by the services required to be provided by the contractor, agent, or volunteer, and for which there is no sexual intent. Who defines exact, exactly what the necessitated touches by an employee or staff member? And who decides what someone's sexual intent is? These are very broad and leave, leave room for a lot to be misconstrued. I'd like to leave you with this. If I was your daughter, what would you have done?
Thanks. I think this is the one I already read.
Well, I know we're in this, but I want to reserve a comment here and then you can explain it in a minute, but I'm really truly interested in the same thing she brought up, especially with number four, if there's policy relating to that. Maybe different from this policy, but I'd like to hear that policy as well. Okay, go ahead.
Abigail Wilson, you were the one I already had, right? Are you Abigail? Okay, so just making sure. Thank you. All right, uh, Sarah Davis, five point six policy updates.
Hi, my name is Sarah Davis. I am a parent of a kindergartner at McBride, a sixth grader at the middle school and a freshman at the high school. And I've been an active community member for about a decade in St. Helen's. Um, I would actually like to address three uh, main points in the suspected sexual conduct with the students' reporting requirements. And I am happy to provide this to you because it does give some suggestions as you requested.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the first, the first one is in the second paragraph and it says sexual conduct does not include touching or other physical contact that is necess- necessitated by the nature of the school's employees' job duties or by the services required to be provided by the contractor, agent, or volunteer, and for which there is no sexual intent. This language is concern- concerning and I would love to see it revisited. If physical touch is required or necessary, the details of any physical contact should be specifically detailed in the employee's job description. A parent and or guardian should be provided with informed consent and give permission for any and all touch that is required for the employee to do their job. And at any time the employee needs to touch a student, they should be acquiring the student's verbal approval before contact is made. Number two, um, it refers to that same section, um, but just the, the end of the sentence which says, and for which there is no sexual intent. You can have the best policies and safeguards in place, but if a student feels threatened, bullied, abused, or harmed, the intent of the ploy, the employee does not matter. An employee can say that they didn't mean to abuse or harm the student, but by stating that what, that it was not the intent of the perpetrator, you are saying that the student's experience was not real. This is very dangerous slope as your job as an employee of the school district is to keep your students safe regardless of the intent of the employee. You cannot ask a child to carry the responsibilities of the district because the district doesn't want to acknowledge the story, feelings, and experiences of the student. The continuation of this is that nothing inappropriate occurred and it displaces the blame from the s- from the school to the student. My third point, um, and I'll read the section. At um, any district employee, contractor, agent, or volunteer who has reasonable cause to believe that a student has been subjected to sexual conduct by another district employee, contractor, agent, and or volunteer, or that another district employee, contractor, agent, or volunteer has engaged in sexual conduct with a student shall immediately report such suspected sexual conduct to the designated licensed administrator. And it continues, but I won't bother you with that. According to the Oregon statute, four one nine B point zero zero five, all school employees are mandatory reporters. Sexual abuse is included in this statute. The policy states that if an employee suspects abuse, they should have to go to the designated licensed administrator. I actually watched the mandatory training video from the Oregon State site this afternoon and it specifically specifically states, and I quote, if you witness possible abuse, you are the responsible reporter. You cannot ask someone else to make this report for you. Your policy states that the employee should report the abuse to the designated licensed administrator. According to the Oregon statute, four one nine B point zero zero five's training, this policy is in direct contradiction to the Oregon statute, which you refer to in your legal references on this policy. You would think that readjusting the leadership and administration would be a sign that you have understood that there is a problem and that you're moving in the right direction to heal the wounds that have been experienced by the victims, students, and community. But this policy seems to be more focused on absolving teachers and the responsibility of their mandated duty to report. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
For clarification, can we, um, also at the top, you can see the last time the policy was adopted was February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. And then it gets re- it gets revisited here and then considered revised, and that was December seventh, two thousand twenty-one. So that's why it has been brought up and to redo it. No, this is not our policy as in revised right now. You guys are able and making comments to revise it. This is the first process out of three. So this is an old policy, not one that we are introducing.
It, it would be helpful, excuse me for interrupting. Um, there were several testimonies here that were provided. It would be helpful to have those notes, um, if you're willing to share as we consider revisions to this particular first draft of policy. Thank you.
And if you don't want to give them up, stick around, we'll make you. I, I'm not being nice to somebody right now, but quite frankly, uh, maybe you have them on your computer or whatever, then you can just give them to, to Steve, but uh, it's, it's true. We, we want to hear what, and, and see what you have written there. I guess, a- actually I had some of the exact same questions and you're helping me, so.
So there was some follow-up I had, uh, I've moved things around. Um, the one thing that we can follow up on for an answer to this was something we've already talked about, which was the background process for the superintendent. So we've talked about kind of what that's going to look like, um, at a different meeting, but can you refresh us on what the background process will be?
That's it. I understand that the uh, background check is a comprehensive background check that will look at a multiple reporting uh, across different agencies. Uh, that's being conducted uh, by a third-party investigator who has done extensive work uh, in the region uh, and uh, recently conducted some of these similar comprehensive background checks for Portland Public Schools when Portland Public Schools was also uh, contemplating uh, a selection process for their next superintendent of schools.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we will move to action items, seven point oh. Uh, seven point one, election of two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Board Chair ORS three three two point zero zero five two, three three two point zero four zero.
I nominate Matthew.
So I have a nomination. Do I have a second?
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded discussion.
I gave my discussion. We kind of did it already, but if there's something that you want to, is there anything you want to add, Matthew?
I'll do my best. Thank you.
So before we move forward, um.
We haven't voted yet, but.
Yes, so this is how the process works. So it gets moved. And we have the nomination and then it's seconded and then we have the conversation about what actually happens and then we go to the vote. So this board has had an incredibly informal structure since I've been on it. And um,
What did you call it? What structure?
It's an informal structure. So the Roberts Rules of Orders, the components of how the meeting's supposed to flow, all of those things have not been followed um, necessarily by the board since I've been on it.
They've been followed, it's not like a lot of leeway has been given in that we're still small town.
Yeah, it's very informal, but the problem with informal is that it leads to potential struggles to get things moving or be able to get them squared away. It puts people that are trying to get public comment into bad positions because then they're invited to comment or they're doing things and then it's inconsistently applied. And so my concern in this is that while I'm trying to get us closer to that, we're still quite a ways away. And so to the end, uh, and I was going to bring this up on a further action thing, but I think it's a good pertinent time. So OSBA has reached out and wants to do a board training um, refresher, both for us and for the community to provide uh, some very specifics about how board meetings are constructed, how commenting is supposed to work, why we do the things that we do, provide a very thorough understanding of how the meeting is supposed to operate, so that people don't get frustrated when I say we can't do that right now. And so if you move forward with that board position, that chair position, you are going to have to be the bad guy in ordering an operation. And that's part of the deal. So to a certain extent, as much as I did not want to interrupt that particular comment, that is part of the deal. Is that to order the meeting in a way that can be structured, in a way that can allow us to get our business done so that people feel like they have the ability to be heard in a constructive way, that um, personnel matters don't get brought up in inappropriate manners that aren't supposed to be happening, um, that we can actually get those answers to where they need to and then follow the construction so that there is a consistent process. All of those things come into play in this particular role. So before you say yes to this particular aspect, is that something in your position that you are now sitting in willing to do?
That is, I ended up coming into this in order to be able to try to improve processes, to be able to try to make them better. Smooth out communication lines to be able to end up making sure that I can end up interacting with other people to be able to make things easier, not to make things more difficult. And I understand the nature of structure and where it needs to happen.
Like. Better than most.
Uh, well, I mean, a, a lot of this, a lot of the setup, for instance, for the public comments is just to be able to make sure everyone can be heard. That they have the opportunity to be able to talk to us, even if they say something that we absolutely disagree with. Like they should still have a voice as part of that. And I would absolutely want that. I mean, I would want the structure at least in order to be able to make sure that everybody has that opportunity. But I also ended up understanding the purpose of the structure in the first place, so that it doesn't go off kilter, so that when you're talking about particular minutia, that it's not going to end up going off and you don't end up getting the answers or you don't end up getting towards finalizing actual solutions towards the problem. Uh, because you can talk all day, every day about a problem. Uh, and it discharges anger and frustration. Uh, and it discharges anger and frustration and that is necessary sometimes. But at some point you have to go, alright, let's go forward from this. Let's keep going. And part of that structure, I understand, is necessary for that.
Okay. Any further comments, concerns, questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of Matthew Douglas being chair, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Nay. You actually get a vote for yourself. Okay, so, uh, we'll, we'll redo this since you didn't know you get to vote for yourself. Yeah, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Nay. Okay, so by a vote of three to two, you are now chair. Uh, so it's pretty easy, right?
So I will officially hand this magic throw the device to you. And, uh, now that you are officially, you get to finish the meeting. Alright.
Now, we really don't need to vote for vice chair because we have one we elected in.
I'm here.
There you go. I would have voted for you anyway.
And, and the re- and, and I'm really, this part of design of why I did that, but. Trent negotiated, he's been talking to all of the, the legal help. He's been. Working with Mr. Webb very closely. He worked with his contract and so he's got a lot of. Current insight as to all the things that are there more than the rest of us. And so as your support person. Uh, one, I'm gonna, I, it's not really an action item, so I can't move to do that, but I'm going to request that. That when we're negotiating with the next person, that it's you and Trent working together in tandem. And so along with our HR folks and other people, but that way you're not hung out there with no experience and, and. You have the help of, of an experience currently, just, just having done this a few weeks ago. So I, I think that, that you two working together is great. Um, there is one rule that we have that you probably already heard and. There's no reply all here, so that any, any thing that you have to bring. Uh, we'll take to this, we don't take it to you. If I have a concern. Uh, I can send it to superintendent and the superintendent can ask each of us individually. He can poll us, he can give us advice. But we can't give each other advice unless it's in the meeting.
Yeah, no, I end up understanding that pretty well, like. When, when you take a look at the transparency rules and how the law is a doing that. No, I am absolutely understanding why that is structured the way it is, like that it guarantees transparency. So that there's no back feeling, there's no, well, here's, I get, no, no, it has to be all above board.
But there's, there's no problem in saying, hey, I got this real issue and sending it off to your superintendent. And then, you know, hey, if you have a concern, maybe you can share this with the other people and ask them what they think. So we would all maybe give a summary to the superintendent and it ends up as an agenda item and they're prepared. We also have a no surprises rule.
Yeah, so we get to the next section and you have an order to get to the next section. These discussions can be made elsewhere.
Both ways too.
Yes, it does.
Superintendent shouldn't surprise me. Yes, I mean, short notice is one thing, total surprise in a meeting is another.
And we can go through more of this, any questions and all that.
Alright, I've said my say for the night.
I will definitely need your help. Thank you.
You have the agenda in front of you. Uh, part of it, Trent was calling point of order to get us back on track and we're at seven point three.
Okay, so, um, alright, so moving on to five three, um. I'm assuming, I'm assuming you maintain the advice here. Excellent. Alright, um, so moving on to five four then. Uh, next.
Seven point three.
And we have to approve the characteristics.
That's okay.
Alright. Alright, we'll keep track of you.
And so approve next action superintendent qualifications and characteristics.
I saw a move that we accept them as presented so far.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So you can pause after a first and a second if there's any comment and then move for, call for the motion.
And then approve twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six I G A S H H. S D and City of St. Helens S R O. All those in favor?
No.
Need a first and a second?
We move.
Second.
Any comments?
Just see.
Any comments? All those in favor? Okay, so moved. Getting it, getting nothing. And then accepting the meaning input, January twenty-ninth, executive session five thirty for ORS one nine two dot six six zero. Two A to consider employment of a public officer, employee, staff, and agent, member or individual agent. And then February twelfth, twenty twenty-five is a board work section, session for RTA implementation.
Just a matter of correction that RTI implementation topic will be moved to March in light of. The expressed interest by acting.
Former.
Trent, um, Monahan to include board development work with OSBA.
So question, when we initially were talking about that, um, February fifth was the initial date and, um. Ours doesn't have a February fifth here. And, uh, when I went to the district website to look at the noticing and some other things. I swear the district website has January twenty-fifth as the next meeting versus January twenty-ninth. Um.
Kristy, she'll.
Kristy. Okay, and do we have a meeting scheduled for the fifth?
You do have a special board meeting, um, and that is on a personnel matter.
Okay.
And when is that?
February fifth.
February fifth.
Okay, that explains. Thank you.
And is that, that's a public meeting?
No, no, that, what? It may be a public meeting, uh, it likely will be an executive session.
Thank you for that clarification. And so on the twelfth, um, having OSBA come in, uh. The other thing that, um, I would like to put for input on that meeting is that, um. So we're getting ready to get into budget season. And I think it's really, really important to start getting some of the information out there that will help clear some questions up about what is or is not. Uh, the way that the budget is structured.
Yeah.
Yes, and so, um, in my time on the board at every single budget cycle. Before we get to that point, I make a plea to the community. To, uh, put in for the budget committee openings that we have. Every single year, we have a less than full budget committee. And so for those that may have a vested interest in going through and poring through numbers. Then I would invite everybody when we begin to open up that particular conversation. To put in for that so that you can go through and understand, uh, the budget process, how budget line items are read. Um, and as one point of clarification, these are all voluntary positions. And so, um, you know, whether it's that or whether it's the school board, none of those are paid positions. I get zero money for this particular deal. And so when we go into the budget process, it's helpful for not just us to understand that. Um, but, uh, it was a great way for me when I wanted to get onto the school board to be able to understand that part. So I got on the budget committee first. And it's a lot of work.
There's, there are a limited number of spaces for the budget committee. But, uh, it is a volunteer application. There's an application for the budget committee if people want to be on it and, and then. We'll select, of course, we interview and, and. I think only once it was, but they are open meetings. So even if you're not on the committee, you can sit there in the same meeting, hear every word that's said. Uh, the pages are up on top and you can look at them and, and it's all a public process. So. There's still chance to comment whether you're on the committee and vote or not. Um, the other, uh, part of this is that, uh, the board training, we want to maybe share that out a little more. That if we're going to do board training for not only ourselves but potential candidates. That it should be made public that if folks are thinking of running for school board, they don't need to declare it to us. But they could certainly come, it's an open meeting on the twelfth and, and OSB will be here and. It would be worth their time to come and get that same training that everybody else gets. So that they're prepared if they are elected to go ahead and step in a little better. So I, I would recommend that we make that quite public to folks that the training is going to be available for any potential candidates. You don't have to declare. You can just be there in the audience and pay attention.
We can certainly do that.
While they are here, could we have them walk us through, uh, K L and the complaint process?
I, yeah, you can ask if they'll do more specifics about some of those things. Um. Oftentimes, it's going to be just how to operate the board. Um, they're not necessarily there for that side, um, but I.
I, yeah, I think they could definitely say like this is when the superintendent is aware, this is when the board is aware and when how it's appealed. And provide some basic steps.
Sure. So that meeting may need to be extended because their portion's three hours.
Yep.
And typically we arrange the desk so that they're more of a work session.
Yeah.
So you may be in the room, but you can still always comment. Um, it's same with board or budget meetings. You're commenting on where money is being spent or clarifying how it's been spent and. That is placed to the budget officer.
Christie, can we just put it on our general website under, there's the general, the topic of board information or whatever and. And like the fact that there's a board training and that there's, uh, some of these other things that are coming up that, that are, are pertinent to. The general population so that it's convenient, uh, volunteer for the budget committee. We can have some of those things. Listed or I don't know, I don't, I don't know how we do that communication, but.
I, I, I think we can certainly do.
You can handle it.
I do think, uh, perhaps there is a broader distribution of content vehicle.
Yeah.
Can communicate those opportunities for participating.
We have a professional back there that's going to.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll stop.
Yes, is there anything?
Again, I want to say thank you, Christie, for the time that you've spent for your grace in working through us. Thank you.
And I want to say another one because the only meeting basically we have left is an executive session is thank you very much, Mr. Webb, for coming and stepping in. Helping us get through the.
If I could, this has been some of the hardest work I've done in my forty-year career. Uh, but there is hope here in St. Helens. We've still got plenty of work to attend to and I'm absolutely committed to making sure that the handoff. With the next acting superintendent sets that person up for success, sets this board up for success. Sets this community up for success and most importantly. Sets up the children and the students of this school district for success. So thank you. It has been an honor. For sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can I just take the hammer, hit the table and say we're adjourned?
I guess we're adjourned.